I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Oklahoma members?
Vienna Moore.
Here.
Trusty Tremblay.
Yeah.
Trusty Martin.
Here.
Trusty Tremblay.
Here.
Trusty Garrett.
Here.
At this time we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 28th and August 11th.
They all have to be separate.
Okay, yes. We'll do the July 14th first.
Take the motion.
For a second.
Yes, that's it.
Any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For both votes. Motion's carried. And I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 28th meeting. Second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. And now we have the August 11th, 2018 meeting. Greg, we have to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. At this time, we have a presentation on petitions, communications, notices, and general question period. So if anyone from the community would like to address more, I'll give the time to look.
Tom Lane-Fatton, Montreal, and the Champlain Village Investor. Thank you for the time. I know I've got a major problem around the world with communication, also here in Champlain. I've attempted to reach you people, either by fax. I've left messages here and I don't get any replies. It's going back now to the last ice problem we had on property number two. Property number one we talked about, which is one I think you want to hear about. Do you want to hear my whole story, then maybe comment at the end, or do you want to do one by one?
This is your time to address more, so...
Well, do you want to come back and I need your time, or so I can get the whole shot and then you can do it again?
That probably best way to do it.
First of all, let me just say that when you send me notices and you give me three days, or five days, or seven days in Canada, it doesn't work. The mail takes too long to get there. So there's no way that I can oblige you. I don't know why the phone is not used, or the fax, or email. I mean, there's something that's pressing. Especially something that concerns me, which I'll bring up in a minute. So I'd like you to be aware that the mail is a long time ago. People don't really know that coming into Montreal. The first problem I have is the ice we had in the river. I guess it was last year. Somebody without any permission, representing you people, went on the property with some kind of machinery. Made a lot of damage on the property, decided to donate. Stonewall. The tenant who was living there lost a lot of stuff that was in the snow, that he left out in the spring. Nobody asked permission, just went ahead and did it. I requested that you get rid of the ice after you pulled it out of the water, which wasn't done. A lot of that ice went onto the building and caused damage on the building. Whatever was in the newspaper the first time it went on, and many times they do stories in the newspaper and can't seem to get it right. They asked a lot of questions and it causes a lot of harm to me as an owner. And also to the tenants who I tried to get or who I had. In this case, the tenants were misrepresented from the journalists. The wrong names were marked down. I don't know if they were marked as owners, I forget what it was, but... Being as Susan's been up here so often knows me very well and knows the properties, I don't understand why the kind of mistakes have been happening, especially the last one. When I've been coming down here for so long, Susan knows me for so long. This lady I know well because I go to church, I get involved in the community, I spend a lot of money down here. Not just in property taxes, but I spend money down here almost every week. So it's not that I come in as a Canadian and hang around for an hour and then go home. So I don't understand why there's such a lack of communication, and why somebody wouldn't call and say, "We've got to go on your property. Is it okay?" Or, "We're going anyway and we're not telling you, and if there's any damage, we'll worry about it later." Nobody ever answered me after the damage. I stand corrected that the secretary didn't tell me there was some kind of answer. I don't believe there was. Damage has certainly never been offered to be repaired, nor any of the product that was lost. And it doesn't help me keep my tenants either. I only say in passing as an entrepreneur and a businessman, something I don't understand. Right here on your wall and your calendar's nothing to do with you, the television. Why do you all use something that's got so much downside instead of upside? And keep talking about flooding, and show pictures of flooding. How does that help anybody in the village? It doesn't help me as an investor. It doesn't help me find investors. It doesn't help me sell properties if I want it. So I don't know why people down there, not just yourselves, but continue to advertise and promote flooding in the Champlain Village. And you do it right here in the wall. And I assume you support the calendar as well. And Mr. Castine runs film with Bob Ben. I don't know if you know, but Bob Ben and I, and Theresa, have been friends from day one. And that's why I invested in it, because I spent a lot of time with Bob. But I don't understand why there's flooding. And I don't understand why I have to go through what I did on ice and not get... And I thought you guys worked for me and the other taxpayers and representatives. And I thought you maybe would do something to help us, rather than, from what I've seen in the last couple of years, just being very aggressive in mail. But in the end, it never seems to be the result. I don't understand the communication problem, nor do I understand the mentality of why somebody wouldn't be supporting me rather than aggressively going after me. I say that because I stood in front of the building, which we'll talk about in a minute. And Mr. Tatro at one point came up to me, and I think he really wanted to go inside, which he didn't get to do that day. And made me believe that there's no way I was ever going to get a permit to demolish that building. At the time, Mr. Aubrey was supposed to do it. He probably saw his machinery, sat there for four, five, six months. I can't say why he didn't do it. I can't say why we never had a contract to do it. He made promises he was going to do it. That's why the machinery stayed there. Why it never happened is all assumption. And of course, we all know what happens when we start to assume. One of the main problems I thought we had, according to Mr. Aubrey, was that we had a discussion of whoever here in your organization, or Mr. Tatro, was not aware of the situation with asbestos. You probably know that anybody who's going to talk about taking down the building is very concerned about getting involved with somebody like me as an entrepreneur, them as an entrepreneur, to tear down the building, based on, from what I can gather, experiences either in Elsens Point, at the Holliday Hotel, the Holland Hotel, or any other buildings. Whether it's Mr. Tatro or his representatives, apparently have seized machinery at some point, tied up their whole operation. But whatever questioning was done on asbestos, so from now on, it seems nobody, because of all that, that happened. Whether it's his reputation, whether he really did it or not, I don't know. All I know is it's there, and the community has communication problems. And all the contractors give me a hard time, either price, or don't want to do it, or not sure if they want to do it, because they don't understand the whole story of asbestos. I came in here a couple of weeks ago and was amazed to find out that Mr. Aubrey was supposed to do it, is get you to pull out your files, because I knew in 2001, when you, your organization, made an offer to buy my two buildings, a ridiculous offer, $19,000 for two buildings. They spent a lot more than that just to paint the building across the street, which I didn't understand. But anyhow, I did not accept that offer. And at that time, I knew the buildings were inspected. And Rene Corry was also involved at the time, because I guess he knew something about rules and regulations as a contractor. And he made me aware what had to be done before you made an offer, as far as if it was any asbestos. And assured me that there wasn't any problem, and I think your paperwork says that as well. So I don't think we have a problem with asbestos in the building. Correct me if I'm wrong. But the paperwork I was given only a couple of weeks ago confirms in my mind. And it's not the most accurate paperwork. If you look, there's a problem with addresses on a lot of the pages. Mr. Tatro had trouble understanding some of the papers. Gave me papers that day, and then stood corrected, and gave me papers again another day, more complete, that he felt explained it better. So the whole file has not been an easy file, from your side, and certainly from my side. And from anybody that I've tried to get involved to help me tear down that building, which was one of my intents. The other was to try to fix the roof. We had a storm apparently June 22nd. Very windy storm, it blew a lot of things around this village. And again, rather than trying to support landowners, I aggressively was attacked with a wrong picture of my building, accusing me of being the building across the street. The story you probably saw on Front Page. Showed the story across the street with a picture of my building. You know, the great thing is Mr. Tatro, because of six or seven boards that flew off the top of the roof, decided to put yellow tape all around it and make some, I guess, some aggressive phone calls, including to Nisek and other people. Which brings up the next problem. Nisek, I could have had Michael Jackson's body on there, because he wants to keep one of these guys. And I could have had fridges full of food. And nobody bothered to call me to tell me they're going to disconnect my electricity. And the letter says that it was a problem... Was in danger of falling off the building. It's been like that since I bought the building. Nisek is in there on a regular basis, reading my meters. If there was a problem, I would have assumed Nisek would have brought the problem up to somebody. So Mr. Tatro, as far as I can understand this letter I got from him, nothing from Nisek. Was that he aggressively, and I can almost call it harassment, without knowing what I'm talking about. But all that happened that weekend sounds a bit like harassment. To get me maybe to do something with the roof or the building, I don't know. It's just, again, assumptions. But I don't understand why the electricity was shut. And if it had to be shut, why it wasn't advised it was going to be shut? And I could either be here to make sure I had nothing in there I would be concerned about, that might have been hooked up electrically. And of course, again, it took seven, 10 days before the letter went out, before I knew that. So I was very disappointed with that as well, as part of the problem. And certainly that Front Page newspaper, as a landowner, did not do any good. It made it look like it was my building that had the problems, I had the tenants, and everybody that I received down there said the same thing. I understand if I do do something, I have to work with Ian. I do have a building permit, or demolition permit. Just called a building permit down here. And they told me I must work with you if I'm going to do something to make sure your sidewalk is protected or whatever. I would like to hear tonight what I have to do with Ian, because I don't really know. Mr. Tatro wasn't exact anymore. He just said to contact you. I don't know where the board sits on this. I don't understand why I don't... Any kind of... I tore down three buildings, cost me a lot of money for the ice problems, from the rain, from the ice storm way back behind my next building. You know I own those two buildings as well, of course, which is what I just talked about, the first part of the story. Spent a lot of money to tear those three buildings down, got no support. And somebody representing, again, you, because they're working for you, came and said they had the dust stats, because they parked one of their units on my property while they were working on the bridge. When a half a block away, you've got plenty of property that you can do. I don't understand. And I call it, listen, aggressive. I'm sorry, maybe I'm a little paranoid, but I don't feel I'm treated like a taxpayer in general. And I don't see anybody wanting to help and work with me. I've tried, Mr. May, to reach him many times. I know you travel, and so do I, so be aware of that as well. I'm not always the easiest guy to reach out to.
Okay, well, I guess that's... I'll try to address, yeah, your all over the place with these questions, but... First, I'll tell you that we are not responsible for news stories. We do not generate news stories. You'd have to bring that up with the newspaper, or whatever. That does not come from the village. Our primary focus here is to maintain the village and maintain the safety of the residents. That building is falling down and is endangering people. If that roof caves in, there'll be very little holding those walls up, and it will likely collapse. You have cost us quite a bit of money doing these inspections. The last inspection was about $1,000. It ties up our resources and those two. We really don't need to be doing that. When we had the ice storm, that was an emergency situation. In New York State, if there is an emergency, if your house is burning down, you do not have to ask permission to come and put the fire out. It's a matter of public safety, and they probably could have saved your building, but they did. And I will say again, in New York State, we have the perfect right to come in there and do that. And they did. And as far as flooding being a part of our history, it is. Champlain has suffered many floods over the years, and it's part of our history. It's a fact of life. And that's why they had that buyout downtown. People who had property down there were given a chance to get out. I don't know anything about what the prices were or anything, but I do know that that was a good opportunity for somebody to get out of that business down there. I've been here for 20-something years, and I've seen, you know, three or four floods that have caused the downtown to be submerged. That's not going to go away, and we're not ashamed of it, we're proud of it. That's our history. And we had, the state has taken steps to clear out some of the flood prone areas of our buildings. As far as asbestos, we have no information on asbestos. That's not something that the village keeps track of. That's a code issue, and we must comply with the village code. And everybody who lives here must comply with the village code. If you do not move your lawn, we will come after you. If you have a building that is in danger of collapse, yes, we will come in there. And we did have an engineer come in here and look at that. And it was his belief that that building was, is in danger of collapse. So our issue as a board, yes, we are here to help the residents, but we are also here to protect the residents from any dangers that may develop. We are taking action on that house across the street, too. That's falling down. We want to keep our village clean and safe, and that's what we're going to do. I think I speak to the board on that. That's one of our issues. And as far as one other thing I'd like to bring up, as far as being in contact, we have copies of all the letters that I sent you. I do not remember getting a whole lot of replies, however. Would you like to answer back on any of that?
I'd like to see copies of the letters, yes.
Well, if they're public information, you can give me copies of the letters.
I appreciate that. My main request was when I asked to speak to you and anybody else on the board, was that I hope you being informed about what's available from anybody and everybody, that maybe there was something we could work together to attain whatever your goals were, to get that building done. Certainly, the $19,000 buyout was nowhere near reasonable, based on what everybody else was getting, or what else was going on in that particular time. Being a Canadian, again, I felt a little paranoid when I had meetings with the farmer, and they did not want to talk to a Canadian. And I was down with their meetings, whatever they had down at the town office, so... No, $19,000 for two buildings and a piece of property did not make any sense to me. And I was hoping that something between now and then, maybe was available somewhere, somehow, to help us do something, maybe even save the building. I don't know. I don't know what the funding is, I don't know what money's out there. And I was hoping somebody here might take 15 minutes and tell me, "No, there isn't," or "Yes, there is, maybe we can look into this." But nobody has given me any kind of feedback at all. I'd like to see the man you're talking about, Mr. Simpson.
Well, that's the state. The board here cannot address whatever... That buyout will run through the state.
No, I'm not suggesting that you address the buyout. I'm just saying, in fact, and hoping that today there might be something available. I don't know if Paquette got any money for the building that she's been working on, for the 400... But I read the newspapers and I see things happening, but it's just bits and pieces. I'm hoping you, based on where you are, maybe knew something, could spend 15 minutes and say, "Hey, maybe we can get some money. Maybe we can keep the building, maybe we can fix it." I don't know. That's all I was asking for, in trying to talk to people.
I don't remember seeing that in any correspondence, but...
I asked, could I please sit with you and speak with you, and see if there wasn't something we could discuss? Here in person. But anyway, not important.
There are Brownfield Grants, which is restoration of historical buildings.
Well, don't get that mixed up. Brownfield Grants are for top contaminated sites, for... If you have oil tanks were there, or something like that. It's not for old buildings.
I don't think I want to spend your time tonight discussing it. I was hoping, I was hoping I could sit down with somebody who maybe would show some interest in listening to my story, and say, "Yes, maybe we can find this, and this, and this." Or, "No, there's definitely nothing." So 15 minutes later, we'll close the book on that. But I haven't had the satisfaction until tonight, to be able to deal with anything.
Well, I'd be happy to speak with you after the meeting. We do have a meeting we have to conduct, but...
And I have another meeting, so I go to go sign the deal to tear that building down.
Okay, well, unfortunately, I have a full-time job, as all of us do. We aren't available during the daytime very often.
We've got emails, we've got phone calls, we've got faxes, and... So if there's any interest, you now know my stuff.
Oh, very good, Tom. Thanks.
I'm just concerned about the ice. Why wouldn't you come and remove the ice? Why would you leave it sit there for like two and a half months, three months? Picture was in the Front Page of the paper? Why would the ice just sit there?
Quite frankly, because we would have done more damage taking the ice out than we would have just letting it melt.
You would not, because it went up against the building and caused damage to the building.
We don't have the equipment.
We had the equipment to take it out.
That wasn't ours.
That was done by EMS in New York State, the emergency...
Well, why couldn't part of the deal be said, "It's got to be removed as well"? Why just leave it on somebody's property? It was so much and so hard, it was like two and a half, three months. If it was your property, you wouldn't sit back and not say anything?
Well, my only comment will go back to that, it's going to happen again, and probably again and again.
Well, then maybe you should be looking more biased to get some of these properties, so you always don't have the problem.
Unfortunately, that's not our problem. We only do these things once in a while, and you have to take advantage when you have to. I'm not, I have never been involved in one of those, so I don't know, but I can look into it for you. That's what it entails. But I know it's a state item, and they have to come in. It's not something that we can do. Anyway, I appreciate you coming in and taking your comments into consideration.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, Tom. Hey, Tom, if you get a chance, we should probably send him copies of the correspondence, so we have something. Mr. Tatro was not here tonight, so we'll have codes in the post.
We had another meeting, and Elsens Point has someone in there.
All right, this time I'll give my report. The first thing I'd like to mention is a good job on the road. I had a lot of comments from the citizens, which I'm sure we all had. It was a good job. We got a lot of asphalt laying down, and appreciation of the crew and the town of Morse, which helped us out, paving. It's a darn good job. The other thing, at this time, we have a proposed local law on manufactured homes. I think everybody has a copy of that, who would be able to review that. I was thinking that we may be able to set a public hearing for that proposed law the next meeting. Someone like to make a motion to a public hearing at the next meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Your motion is good. The only other thing I wanted to remind everybody, the upcoming rabies clinic, several times, I won't read them all off, but here at the village office, if anybody has any animals in need of rabies vaccination, is to come in here at the village, or call and get these scheduled. Okay. Trusty Tremblay, do you have anything to report this month?
I'd just like to echo Jeff's comments to Ian and the crew. It's a very good feeling when you run into people and they thank you for doing their road, how pleased they are. And we've heard nothing but good comments about all of the work that was done, so thank you, thank the crew. And to the town of Morse for doing an excellent job. The only other thing I'd like to say regarding rabies, in case anyone did not see the article in the newspaper, when that article came out about the rabies drops, they had already started doing the rabies drops. So if anybody finds any in their lawn, just toss them into the woods. Our dog's picked up like nine of them. Yeah. So I did call the rabies line and talk to someone there, and it's not harmful to your pets if they do get a hood from your dogs or pets. But they asked with us if we would please toss them into the woods, so they... They're a round square with a packet, their packet in the center with a pinkish reddish liquid with wax on the end of it. And it's like fish meat. Which is what it is. It's a fish meal to draw the raccoons. So if you do have, your pets have a good mind, you're going to earn them, just throw them back in the woods. We're vaccinating everything in our backyard.
I'm sure it's something like that.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Trusty Martin?
I'd like to echo the compliments of the mayor, Trusty Tremblay. The streets are wonderful, they're doing a good report. Thanks to the crew from Morse. We have a shared services meeting on the 20th of August. Much was discussed, but the Senator Little's grant money, $30,000 grant money, looking at returning, we're giving the three entities, the Village of Champlain, or Elsens Point, and the Town of Champlain, some funds to deal with the quad centennial celebration. To use some of that funds, or some of those funds, that grant money to do those, to help out with those. We also had a water meeting with the town. There was some discussion on different issues. One of the things that we're going to have to do, and I'll sit down with Trusty Tremblay and look at the contract, bring that up to date, the last contract expired a bit ago. There's also a public hearing on the 17th of September. And that's a, I'm sorry, I go back to shared services here now. The request for proposals has gone out to different engineering firms, and there is a public hearing on this on the 17th of December, 5:00 p.m., here in the village office. Town of Champlain, thank you very much.
December? No, September 17th.
September 17th. Did I say it? The 17th of September, 5:00 p.m., at the town office, to look at this, to look at this grant. Dealing with the study for the water and wastewater programs that are going to be... I guess, I don't see this as new business, it's a little business, but do we have follow-up pickup dates? As of yet. Do we want to remind the citizens that we're not going to pick up the trees in there? Everything must be in bags? Is that the agreed upon?
Correct. We would like to see everything, if you have brush, that brush must be in a clear bag, just like the leaves are. And we pick up your brush in a clear bag.
Do we have any dates for that?
Well, I didn't set dates, because I wanted to discuss that it has to be in clear bags, so... And what that does is just minimizes the bulk of the road. Getting rid of it now has become an environmental nightmare. It's much more challenging now than it was in... So if you agree that we can put those in bags, is that...
Can we end that under new business, have a discussion on this pickup? Because I don't think we've ever come to a resolution on completely eliminating.
Not eliminating, but I have to echo one of these. We have to pay to take the brush away now, and it's costing very prohibitive. I just had a large, a tree hit by lightning and had a large limb. I cut it up into small pieces. I found a farm that would take the smaller pieces and the firewood I gave away. I think people have to start to think a little more creatively about that, and say, "Hey, listen, you know, we got the bigger pieces." We're going to have to find a different way of getting rid of that stuff. Now, the leafy things, yes, we can still deal with, but it's starting to get expensive. What we're really doing is subsidizing a trash pickup, which nobody does anymore.
And what we're subsidizing is the enforcement of keeping a clean village, is what we are asking people to do. And we're offering that service, just like the taxpayers pay for things that they may not use, such as food stamps and welfare, and roads that don't go near their homes. You know, I think that we need to look at that as a whole picture as well.
Okay, well, we'll make a motion if it is this time, I don't know.
Thank you.
Hey, is that it, Greg? You want, Trusty Tremblay?
No, I don't have any report this month, but I will echo as well. A lot of positive feedback about the roads, and studying, and again, thanks to a lot of the town board as well.
It was good so long ago.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Tom. Trusty Garrett?
I ditto that. And I think we should change the order of reports once in a while, so that we get to say it first. We have met several times, the Quad Centennial Committee for the Town of Champlain and the Village of Champlain. And we have, as Greg said, secured some funding through Senator Little, totaling $14,000, so we should be able to do some fun things here. And some of the ideas are, we are going to have a quad t-shirt available, and we're going to put out two students contests for designing the t-shirt. We also have, we have to work out the legal logistics, kind of threw that in the pile today at our meeting. We are having a Champlain 2009 commemorative wine that's going to be up for sale, where the label's going to be designed and whatnot. But I kind of mentioned that, can we really do that? So we're finding the avenues of how we can go about it, because we have someone that's willing to do it. willing to do it at a very great price, and that would be kind of fun to have. We're also working on a possibility of having commemorative jewelry, working with ICE over here and getting a possible, whether it be a medal, or whether a charm of some type of the Louis de Champlain statue, which would be kind of fun. There's a plaque going up, reestablishment of an old plaque at the Point of Fair. There's going to be a pictorial exhibit at the History Center, getting everybody to give pictures that they have, old pictures, and you know, more of that will be coming out, but Celine, my pet, is heading that portion up, so if anyone has any historical pictures they'd like to contribute to this event, would be great. There'll also be a community dinner, similar to the one in 1959, and I saw pictures from this event, and unbelievable, the numbers of people, I forgot how many thousands, it was literally thousands, that were in the front of St. Mary's Church when they were rededicating the statue, which the statue will be rededicated. We did get the grant for it, as you know. The first five hundred dollars has arrived this week for it, so we'll be working on that as well. We're also working on the Champlain Community Park, which is in the process of being developed, and whether we're going to have some kind of event held there to pull it all together between the two, you know, Ross's Point, Champlain, and the village. Also, we're looking at a tour of historical homes, and with these homes on the porches, we would have a picture available of what the house was originally, you know, who was there, why it's part of the history, blah, 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 which we kind of, that's going to take quite a bit of work. We're also a K through 12 curriculum. We're waiting to hear if we get the grant for that, but I'm hoping regardless, that the schools will still participate, and that involves a grant that I wrote for the kids to put down artistically in writing, PowerPoint, however they want to do it, their interpretation of the history and what they've learned, and have to display that in our park. If weather does not permit during our event, once we decide on the date of this event, sometime August, then it will go into the History Center, so people can see it and see all the work that the kids have done, which is really kind of cool. Let's see. We're going to be having, hopefully, a religious service, where we're going to be bringing in, hopefully, someone French speaking in for a service. We will hand that, like, away to a shore. We're going to have a stamp cancellation, which is purely for this event, which would be cool. And community banners, which they will be in the village throughout the town, making people aware of the event, which is like this here, that we have the Explore 400, you know, New York, they'll have that emblem on it, and getting people out and getting them aware of it. The other part that was mentioned is the up in the air piece of the St. Mary's Parade, and whether that becomes part, instead of just the, you know, the St. Mary's Parade, have it doing with Louis de Champlain, and I'm hoping to get more of the schools involved with that, if, you know, we do it to that theme. Because this is a huge event, and it's about us. We are Champlain. So, we need still lots of people to volunteer. Our committee is five people, so we could use more people. As you see, we have a lot of great ideas that I'm sure are going to come to fruition. But it's exciting, it's a big event, and I think that we need to get everybody, young and old, involved in understanding how unbelievable this is to have it, a 400 year celebration. And it's not something that happens very often in places, but you're allowed to enjoy it. So, it's going to be a big thing next year. That's all I have.
Okay, fencing is, it sounds like we made good progress on that, and we're all hoping to come up with something that, I mean, affect our position.
Well, it's good. We meet every two weeks, Mondays at 3:30, so anybody available or interested. We meet at the Historic Center.
So, where do you want the word banners?
Yeah.
Do I get a free T-shirt?
Do I get a free T-shirt? After I buy one.
No free T-shirt.
Nothing free.
Okay, we move on to the board of quick treasure?
I'm going to spend topic with our August 2008 revenue expense reports.
Okay, this time I'll dedicate a motion to approve the warrant.
Someone.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, are there any questions on the report? If not, Trustee John Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee John Lee? Trustee Gary?
Aye.
And then more, aye. Okay, we'll move on to purchase requisition. We have several this month. The first one is a purchase order to get a new entrance door over here on the north end of the building, and to repair the wall. I guess we have a little bit of, I think the sill plates rotted, so this is for the repair, the new door, which will have to be cold, which is about 1,200 a bar, and repair the wall. It would cost 2,000 to 800 dollars. We have a motion to replace the actual store and repair the wall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Have we gotten anything in writing from Marcel further? He has just a verbal at the 2,800.
That's Red, right? What's his name?
Red.
Lindsay. Yeah, I have a written quote.
No, Marcel talks to us, not the other one.
The first one you have a written one for, but the second one said verbal only, and that's the one we're approving, is a verbal only. That's 2,800. The written one is 292681 for R and R builders, and then you have a verbal quote of 2,800.
No, R and R general contractor, that's...
Which one are you? I, I do the agenda, I put the least amount of the quote, so, that's not...
No, the R and R builders was the contractor, that's, no. What's his name? Lindsay. He, he's the one that gave me R and R builders.
Okay. But if the one is cheaper, can we get that in writing for that price?
The Marcel?
Marcel.
He said he's going to do it by the hour, and he gave me a verbal quote for it. He wouldn't put it in writing. That's Cowboy, the local, he's a local man, he was just on street.
Yeah, I don't know if that's who we should go with, but it seems like...
None of the people... The way that generated that quote right there generated is, I went to make salad. He said he'll have his door expert look at it, which is Marcel. He came up, looked at it, and then gave me a verbal quote of 20.
Do we have a written quote for the, from the other person?
Yes.
Let's get my figure.
2926 is the one. It says he's going to, you know, replace, talks about the amount of two by fours he's going to use, T-111 siding. Half inch thunders.
I don't know how everyone else feels, but I, you think the hard to pass number would be what we want to go with?
Yeah, I agree. I know one's a little more, but...
Well, we need, we need to know what was going to cost us.
If I was 126...
2926.
Yeah, that's...
But if he's not going to give us a written quote?
Marcel doesn't give us a written quote. And I also have JV Carpenter, JV Carpentry and Fencing, theirs was 59.
Oh, that makes it easy. Okay, so Greg gave a motion. You want, you want to amend that to...
Yes.
Or maybe you have a second? You want, you want to move your second, so?
Yes, I'm sure. I have a motion to spend 292681 on our builders to fix the garage door entrance replacement and bring it up the court.
Okay, second, Tom? Is there any further discussion? If not, Trustee John Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee John Lee? Aye. Trustee Gary?
Aye.
And then more, aye. Okay, the next item we have up for a purchase order is a water plant storage shed. The purpose of this storage shed is to store chlorine and alkaline, so we can locate it inside the fencing of the water plant compound. This is something that we were, shouldn't say written up on, but it was something that was, well, yeah, I guess we were. They said that we did not have a good system for quarantining our chlorine. We previously stored it back here. It's not a secure area at all times. So, this storage shed, which I believe is completely pre-protected, this will be what we would use this for. It would be close enough to the building. I don't think we need to have that heated, but if we did, we could run power out to it if necessary. I'm against it. We could do that ourselves if we need to. So, I would entertain a motion to put the storage shed to the water plant?
Make a motion to accept the purchase of the Easy Sell Storage Amish Shed for 2,300 dollars.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion on this?
The 2145 is the rough, the wood from the painted.
Yeah, that's what I was going, it makes a difference.
I guess, I can tell you that I have one of those Easy Amish Sheds, and it's sealed up a lot better, it has plywood floor. If you do need to insulate that, it would be much easier than trying to... And I know with paint jobs, I've had that for probably close to 10 years now, and I haven't had paint yet, so...
Fuck you.
Well, it's based on finish. It's not, it gets paint or stain. I think it's something big. Okay, is there any further discussion on the storage shed? If not, Trustee John Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee John Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Gary? Okay, the next item that we have here, it costs 1,900 dollars, is a plate compactor. I went and looked at the one that we have, it is probably 15, 18 years old. The replacement parts would probably cost us close to 900 dollars. Then we're going to have to get somebody to install a lot, the engine and the shot on it. We wouldn't, it cost probably about 1,100 dollars. We still would not have replaced the stator, which is the portion of it that causes it to vibrate up and down. This is an item that we use quite often, so I was, I thought that, given the age of that, we were just getting a new, instead of playing with air costs and something like that up the edge. So, I entertain a motion to purchase a plate compactor. Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, any discussion?
Ian, do you know anything of these three companies that you've gotten prices up, what kind of backing they have for their merchandise, how easy it is to get parts if we need it?
Who's the vendor, I guess, is the question?
Very, the, the, there's three different vendors. The BMI vendor is the original manufacturer of what we currently have. Actually, the unit that we have is so old that it's actually, the company has changed names, but they're, they are a provider, they're out of Canada, of either the repair parts or a whole unit. The other ones are Northern Tool, which is, we get their catalog all the time, so you can, you would have to buy it through the catalog, because there's no store, local store for that. And the other one was another company, again, off the internet. My goal was to find something that was compatible to what we have, and the other ones, they have water tanks on them, so we can use that water sprinkled on the pad and compacting it, so stuff doesn't stick through it. And our current one doesn't have that, it's just, because it's old. Maybe it had had one originally, but it doesn't now. So, either way, either one of those companies, you can all get repair parts for those. They're all Honda motors, they're all the same type mechanisms, it's just, you know, what company, what color do you want, and what company are you...
So, the one is buying it directly from the manufacturer, so we'd be able to get parts from them?
Right, the one, the BMI...
Is that this one for 1,900?
They're all roughly 1,900, aren't they?
Yeah.
They have to take us 1,900, BMI.
1,900.
I do know of ordering parts, so if you do have contact, if you're either buying this or manufacturing, they will support, get parts. If you buy it from Northern, like Northern, usually Northern, I draw it, they will get you parts, you don't have to contact the manufacturer anymore.
Most likely, yeah. If you buy it, if you go through the internet one, and you need repair parts, you're going to have to...
Contact the manufacturer.
It'll get a little work.
Is there free shipping on this BMI? It doesn't say, or others say free shipping.
It's plus free.
That would be plus free.
And you know how much that is?
No, I don't.
So, the, we've got the free, more than...
Are they all the same model, or is this...
They're all equal, yeah.
No, are they just...
No, different.
Different manufacturer, each, different manufacturer?
The, because BMI makes their, they make their own, so if you go to Northern Tool, you can get four different brandings. Same with the one off the internet, you can get like two or three different brandings. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, well...
The BMI makes...
I didn't realize there was a difference, so that's probably going to cost you...
But they're all compatible, I mean, they're all the same...
That's got 1,000 bucks.
That would too.
Shipping.
That's not a white, I...
Yeah, Tool Fetch is free shipping, and they're only 20 dollars more than BMI.
The Tool Fetch was, that's a, that's a really nice unit. If I had my brothers, I would go with that product, but I, you see on the, on the purchase request, I didn't put it on there, specific one, because I wanted to have it discussed.
Well, it just sounds like it'd be a little cheaper if it's a good one.
The 1,929?
Right.
Plus free shipping, and that's the one you like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, who made the second of that? You want to take second back, and Kim, was that in your motion?
Yes.
Uh, did we turn that to...
Tool Fetch.
Uh, I amend my motion to purchase the plate compactor from Tool Tech at a price of 1,929.20 cents with free shipping.
Tool Fetch.
Okay, is there any, okay, any further discussion there?
Go through the Tool Tech, I'm sorry.
They have it.
Geographically, I'm not sure.
That's a good point.
Through the internet? Right.
We're on the eastern coast, Monday through Friday.
We don't have a plate compactor guy, or I'm not sure if I, if I put my nose to the grindstone, I could go to James, or Taylor Reynolds, or something like that, and maybe we could find a worker. Generally, probably the same.
Okay, no further discussion, uh, Trustee John Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee John Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
And then more, I skipped over this one, I shouldn't have, the garage heater replacement project, this is to install the gas heater... project, this is to install the gas heaters that we bought for the garage, so it'd cost fifty-four-hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-two cents. And we're gonna take a motion to install the garage heater. Second?
Second.
Does anybody wants to get those? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Justine Martin?
Aye.
Justine Chombley?
Aye.
Justine Garrett?
Aye.
And then, the final purchase order that we have here, this is to complete the well project. This is for, I think the breakdown is on the purchase order, super materials, which is pipes, the installation of the pumps, and flushing of the wells. And this is what we, I've already purchased the pumps, this is what we'll need to wire them in, pipe them in, through the flushing. And I think the other quote that we added was, it was another thing like what we had before, was by the hour, don't know where that would end up. Only eighteen-hundred dollars, this is labor, for this, it's parts, just so, there's no breakdown of that. So it's not, it's mostly for what we need, for installing pumps. Do we have, do we have any further discussion? Or we, yeah, we have motion on that. Are we going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Install the well?
Install the well pumps and wells.
You have a second? I'm sorry, gotta head myself, discussion?
If we include the price of the parts, we have to have three quotes to prove this.
We were only able to get two, I believe.
I have.
So what do you do to get past our requirements?
There are, this right here is two different companies, for Leon and Menard, who's a, another well drilling company, you didn't write it that way, but Shilai is a well company that's gonna pull them out, and replace them for eighteen-hundred dollars, just gonna take out the old quote and do the new. The other contractor was Orange Bee, and that was a hundred dollars amount.
The parts should remain the same, I just put.
The parts remain the same.
It's only eighteen-hundred dollars.
The, the, the problem.
More hours, your customer, and then again, we're guessing, what am I, uh?
Leon is the only one in this area that I've been able to find that does the pumping.
What will the amount, because we have one person doing the flushing, otherwise you would have had to have one person doing the installation, and then someone else doing the flushing.
You're not paying someone?
So you're not gonna be paying somebody to sit there and wait till they're done flushing before continuing with the installation?
No, I understand all that, I'm just saying, how do we get around our requirements here for this expense?
Well, if there's no one else that does it, I don't know how we can get an additional quote, unless we get out of the area, but I think it's gonna work.
Well, I understand that as well, but I'm saying, our requirement is to have these three quotes for this kind of money to be spent.
I, I think it says where, where you can, if there was something that only one person did, you wouldn't be able to get three quotes.
But I'm sure there's someone in the Vermont area that does, I'm not saying you have to go with this guy, no need to do this, we need to get it done, but as far as what our requirements are, no, I don't know, what are we held accountable for? I mean, it's something that we're supposed to do, and we can't just say, well, there's nobody else in the area, you know, nothing's in our area, we have to go elsewhere for anything. You know, I just, we need to follow what the protocol is.
Well, I don't know, ended up before, so we weren't able to.
How do we get around that protocol? I'm just, I'm asking that question, I'm not trying to be ornery, what do we do?
I'm not sure.
Is there something?
I'd have to research it. Will he be able to do this if we don't act on this until October, is he gonna be able to do it that late in the year?
We wait till October, we're putting everybody in this village together.
No, what if, what if we pass this, saying that we can spend up to this amount of money, blah, 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 and then we can just see if there's anybody else to get quote from, or see how we cover ourselves to cover the protocol? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not being objectionable to getting this done, this has to get done, we're down to one pump.
Yeah. Can we approve the dollar amount?
Right, approve the dollar amount, and immediately just get that other quote to cover us.
Yeah, because I'll be honest with you, I don't think you're gonna find what it will be that cheap. The materials?
Probably not.
The material, yeah, we can do that, yeah, no, I agree with you. I'm just saying that, you know, the materials are not gonna change much. I don't think there's anybody that's discount.
Top of the morning, he's got warrants.
So anyway, yeah, okay, well, see, who made the second?
Steph, can I say one thing? He's able to start this next month, so we can start working on our wells next month.
We got two or three days to get some calls.
Call somebody.
So maybe we should go to the, uh, okay.
What do you say, can you call Nikon on that? Will they be able to give you an answer? And if they say there's somebody else?
Yeah, I, I think we should act on this dollar amount, because I really don't.
He can start next week.
Okay, so let, we'll approve the dollar amount, and we will try, we will try and get a quote.
And at least I know we're in Nikon.
Right, exactly, I know what we do with this.
Well, I mean, we could treat this as an emergency purchase, it is something that we don't, but let's, let's do what, you know, what Amy suggested, I think it's a good suggestion. I don't see any problem with doing that.
I could put everyone on an individual purchase request, and they're all under three-thousand dollars, and it'll only be over a quote.
Well, I think we can take care of that. Let me catch you after me. I think we can take care of that. Okay, so Greg, you want to take your second back, so we can then that, approve the dollar amount?
I amend the motion to approve the dollar amount to, for those wells to be installed and do flushing.
Up to?
Up to ten-thousand, ten-thousand, thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second, okay. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, if not, trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Justine Martin?
Aye.
Justine Chombley?
Aye.
Justine Garrett?
Aye.
And then, motion is carried. Now we'll report to superintendent.
I'd like to say thank you from the board and my workers, I'd like to say thanks to those guys, the town of Moore as well. A lot of work went into this, a lot of manual labor, and a lot of time that we all collectively as board and, and those, everything from budgeting and creating a plan to purchase the appropriate amount of asphalt to get the village streets done. For the village people, thank you for, for being patient and working with us, and we're doing a lot of stuff, not just asphalt, but a lot of good things. With that, we are finishing Moore and Willow Street, we're, we're working on those today, finishing those shoulders off on those two streets. Later this week, we'll move our way up to Meadow, Pine, and South. There was a few processes we went over to get that done. They do some shoulder stone on the back country roads, they put down that shoulder stone. I didn't think that that would be appropriate within the village, laying all that stone and stuff on people's front yards, it wouldn't be very presentable, so we're, we're going with topsoil, and we're gonna just keep it the way it used to be. So, it's a working process. Last week, it's taken a little while, because last week, along with some assistance, great assistance from the DOT folks, the local guys right here, thank me to them as well, there was a very large black willow tree that had fallen about a month ago in river, about four foot diameter. If you went across the main street bridge, you would have seen it, it is now gone. They went in there, along with us, and an approval from the DEC to have that tree removed, to prevent any kind of ice damming and flooding and stuff like that. Took a day and a half to get that tree out of there, and the riverbank is restored and cleaned back up. So Mr. Hebert's very pleased with that, hopefully he's, he's stopped the ice and stuff from coming around his house even more than that. And just starting to focus now more on the preparation for winter months. Started working out with sand, cleaning up, and then preparing for winter months. That's about all I guess, Manchester City, USDA stuff, sorry, I'm gonna jump off there, but there's two types of pallets that they use for the babies. I only know this because I personally went up in the airplane and distributed them, along with some of my own stomach drive.
This is pretty nasty.
My, my, my DNA is all over the Adronics now. The ones that you see within the village limits, the little square ones, those are distributed via hand and truck, people dive around and they throw them out, because they can't airdrop in little, little villages or towns and right next to populated areas. But you're absolutely correct.
She told me they were dropped by state trooper.
Yeah, state troopers, yeah, state trooper with the New York State Department of Health out of Albany is doing that as well, yeah. So, just some food for thought there.
But it would have been nice if we had, you know, before we were panicking, wondering what our dogs were picking up.
Most, most household pets don't have proper teeth to poke through the vaccination. They can, but, but some of them generally don't.
You have a lever. We've got two leverers.
I, I know you mentioned that, so I forget, it's a pretty interesting experience, to fly over the Adronics five-hundred feet, and throw various things out, like the belly of an airplane. But it was, it was a good ride. But again, thank you for the comments and the ass. That's all I have.
Were you flying the plane or ducking it out?
Oh, no.
You don't have a.
Persian, it was so embarrassing.
Okay, Lani, could you read the correspondence?
North of Manhattan, state of New York, Public Service Commission approving renewal of cable television franchise, request from Wendy Davies requesting water and source account credit. Update to board regarding Larry Friend's water sewer bill, correspondence from Rosas Point, Champlain Historical Society regarding dance recitals and quad centennial activities, correspondence from Clinton County Department of Personnel regarding Tandy Kelsey and new position duty statement and their email response from Deputy Clerk Darkholm. Notice violation to Darryl Counter regarding his property at twelve forty-three Route Nine. Notice violation to Linda Bader's regarding her property at twelve sixty-eight Route Nine. Notice violation to Ronald Donnichel regarding his property at eighteen Water Street. Correspondence from New York State DOT regarding New York State Route Nine over the Great Shayside River being restricted highway during reconstruction process. Annual water inspection report from Clinton County Health Department. Letter to Cory Thompson and Alice Miller regarding their reimbursement request. Letter to Robert Luffett regarding his reimbursement request. Letter to Pell Properties and report from Village Engineer regarding eleven sixty-three and eleven sixty-five Route Nine properties. Letter to Alan Gibson, Department of Personnel requesting non-competitive status for new position. Letter to Clinton County Emergency Services regarding the names of streets at Horizon Heights. Correspondence from Kendall Plant Jr. regarding village issues. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department looking for a wire order for three homes on Main Street. Letter to Attorney Marshall asking for zoning law clarification. Notice violation to Brian Dumanell regarding his property at the former Champlain Elementary School. Perma Safety Evaluation Report. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding the town of Champlain Water District. Letter from Attorney Marshall asking for a review of law number one from two thousand eight.
Thank you, Lani. Old business, I think, this Thomas Shayside Shands Service request, we, Attorney Marshall can look at that?
I don't think he ever asked me that. What, Mr. Marshall, would we do that?
Yeah, we probably shouldn't, just make sure that the, the new hire for the Department of Public Works, we're still going around on that. After discussing this with some of the board members before we started, I believe, maybe we should get an opinion from Ann Killip as to what the wording, that, if that is an issue? Oh, that's sorry, labor guy, is this a labor boss? To coordinate with the contract and the title and all that, just to make sure we're okay.
Okay.
Or not, that's the case maybe. I don't know if anyone is prepared to act any other old business at this time. So if not, I guess we'll get to the matter of trash pickup. I know it's probably a good discussion, so we should get a motion for, again, discussing it, so someone might make a motion to, that's what we're gonna do this year for fall pickup.
And make a motion? That we have discussion regarding what will be allowed?
Well, no, we have to make a motion to either, just put it in clear bags, or not put it in clear bags, and.
I thought you made a motion and had a discussion.
Well, no, we can't discuss it without a motion, either do it or not, and then we can discuss it, so.
Make a motion, we can change it after we discuss it, make up something.
Well, normally, you, you amend your motion, and after you discuss it.
If, if, if there's, if we don't like the direction of the process, but we just have, we have to, we're supposed to do something, and then we can discuss it.
I make a motion for the fall pickup dates, to have brush in clear bags.
Okay, do you have a second? Okay, now we can discuss.
As I said earlier, in discussing this with other people within the village, the comments that came back to me, which I never thought of, is that as taxpayers, we pay for things that other people benefit from, and, you know, my concern is, we are really trying to keep this village cleaned up, and if we take away that brush, I've already got a neighbor that's piling it up to bring it out to the end of the road, and, you know, it's hard, people don't have the vehicles to move this stuff. I know it's an expense on our part, but I, I think it's something that we need to look at, just as a bottom line of, we do wanna keep this place clean, and I don't know what will happen if we take away that benefit that's been here a long time, I understand it's an expense, and, and we're all facing additional expenses, but you, you talk to people who don't have a pickup truck, or who don't have a trailer, you know, how are they gonna get rid of this stuff? You know, it's, and it's, yes, it's a benefit that's going to, uh, benefit some people in the village, and other people, it doesn't, because they don't do it. But it's just like anything that we spend money on in, in this village, it does benefit some, it may not benefit everyone, just like, you know, in the city, in the town, in, in our state, we pay a lot of taxes for things that none of us in this room collect on. This is a, this is a service that we as a village, I really firmly believe we need to continue picking up brush and, and picking it up, I understand it's an expense, I understand it's a huge burden on, on our guys, I understand that, but it, it's a perk, we don't offer a lot of perks here, not many at all, and I think it'd be a real shame to take this one away.
Well, not for both, right?
Yeah, I don't think we're both proposing taking it away, but it's become a problem of where to get rid of it.
No, I understand all that.
And how much it costs to get rid of it.
Because we would have to treat that as garbage. Because we would have to treat that as, as garbage, as trash, and so we would pay by the pound, which, I can tell you wood is very, very heavy. Uh, we can no longer burn it. If we could make arrangements to bring it somewhere where we were able to burn it or something, that would be one thing, but to pay for it as trash, uh, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars, not hundreds of dollars. And like Tom said, when I, and I myself would, would never propose to do away with it, but I guess asking the residents, and like I said, I just broke down a large tree limb, and I'll, I'll tell you, it was two truckloads of wood that I gave away. Luckily, it was maple, so somebody wanted it. But, uh, as far as breaking down the limbs and branches into the leaves, uh, yes, it took me an afternoon to do it, but I was easily able to break that up, down into something that could go in bags. And I'm saying, we would just be asking people to just take, go one more little step, if you have some brush to cut it up. I, I know, it was like after the ice storm, we just couldn't handle it, and I know I had to do away with my brush myself also. But we're not asking people to do that, just to break it down into something that we can handle easily and that will hopefully be able to dispose of easily. I, from doing that just recently, like I said, it was a little extra work, it took me a couple of afternoons to, and I cut up the wood so somebody would want it into fourteen inch pieces, but, you know, I had some big pieces there. But I think we can, you know, meet everybody halfway with our brushy stuff, but as far as full-size trees, I really think, you know, and that's what we ran into a little bit this spring, was people were putting some pretty big stuff in.
Well, we never take full-size trees, we're talking three-inch stuff.
Uh, there was some big stuff bigger than that.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of massive cleanup this spring, it seemed like, and...
It's hard for us to handle. If people could break that down into smaller, easier to handle pieces, uh, it would be greatly helpful.
If we haul that, I don't mean to object, but if we haul that, I mean, I do, but if we, if we haul that to a landfill, you have to pay the cost to get rid of it, or we have to carpet. If you ever saw us pick our brush here, uh, and, you know, as our operation, we'd get a little tractor, we'd pack it in there and stuff, stick it all over the place, and it's because it's so much brush, we try to minimize the truck loads by packing as much as we can. We step out these boundaries of the village, and the State Troopers, you know, all, we have to minimize our volumes, which increases our travel times or frequencies to the dump, more fuel, man hours, the whole thing. It's an incredible amount of energy. If we do it in a bag, and I emphasize a clear bag, because if you, if you just stay smaller, what they'll do is just, they'll just cut it up in little pieces. Now I can't pick it up with a forklift to haul, and now I have to physically do it. If it's minimized, smaller chunks in a plastic bag, clear bag, I can put that in the dump truck, and I don't have to carpet it. So now it's in a bag, so I can light the leaves, you can just take them away. Otherwise, we have to tarp everything, so we don't have a tarp, so we gotta go buy a tarp. It's, it's an incredible amount of energy because we no longer can put our stuff down there at the water plant like we used to in the past, and then I'd get a special permission from the fire department and fire security to have a fire and burn it, so we can, you know, control the brush pot.
You know, long-term, I think part of the brush answer would be, and that may be a shared services type thing, where we can get together, because I, I'm sure that everyone has the same mission. Uh, if we could get together with the town or, or somebody, if they, we had a location where it was okay to bring this stuff, uh, because, I mean, quite honestly, we can't deal with it as garbage and pay by the pound long-term. We need a better solution than that, I mean, even these bags...
Well, the clear bags, we're still gonna pay for by the pound.
I think that's been one of our discussions, was to find a centralized location to...
I, I think that's something, we're always discussing this, because it is, it is costly.
But you have to take the first step, and the first step is, you have to get away from the old way we used to do it and get the more equal friendly, more equal correct way.
Yeah, we just can't bring it into an empty lot and toss brush in there and then it's lost, and we're gonna find for that. And that, that's where the issue comes in. Plus, I don't know exactly how many, I know at one point we were up to thirty truckloads of brush, at least.
Right here. That was incredible.
So, I, I would, I would think we, we should at least try that, that's what Rouse's point has gone to.
We may discourage some of the brush coming unless they have to cut it up before it's in a bag.
I know, I know, and we, we really don't wanna do that, like Amy said, but...
No, but I'm saying, I think a lot of it wasn't just brush, a lot of it was more than just brush, what I saw on the side of the road.
Yeah, we all did, you know, we, we had limbs, there were larger limbs, and, you know, we really aren't equipped to, remember that?
That, I can't, and you mentioned, and to, to repeat what you said, is to keep it clean, and I can't go up there and say, okay, that's an inch or that's three inches, I'm just taking that, and then leave the remaining. I, I can't. I can, but I don't, I pick it all, because I don't wanna leave half a mess, and, and especially on the Main Street. That's why we, we take it all, I know we say we don't, but we do regardless of the diameter, because we don't wanna walk away, and then all we're gonna remember, all people are gonna see is, well, that we have enough they love.
Well, you know, I, I, I was thinking, and, and it's sort of a compromise, I mean, we, we can try that this fall and work towards coming up with something maybe for spring. I think there's more, actually more large brush in the spring than there is in the fall anyway, but, you know, I think we get more of these.
Can I make a suggestion? When you come across an instance like that where, you know, people are leaving pieces like this, could we have a pre-done-up letter that says, you know, like you do with a boil water or you go around to the homes and, and i-if people do do that, maybe because they haven't seen it in the paper or they haven't watched the tape meeting or whatever, could we have something that could get hacked to their door that said, you know, here are the guidelines?
You know, I think we need to start moving towards getting something easier to do, and I, I think, I think we all realize that, that it's not business as usual anymore on that.
But if we don't have something where, when, when they go around and, well, you picked up mine, but you left all with Greg's, well, maybe Greg's not aware of it.
When's the next, uh, water...
I was just thinking, yeah, October first, yeah. If we can come up with some dates, we can put it on there.
Well, we could put that out there and also put about, about bags.
I only have a little, very limited amount of space to write something, so...
Yeah, I know, it's like a one-liner, two-liner stuff.
And if, and if you're going with clear bag, it's two lines, but small, uh, brush must be cut up and put in clear...
How much more would it cost us to put those bills in an envelope with the letter? Because we really need to make people aware.
A letter would be...
It would be about twice as much.
But how much is that?
Forty-two cents a letter, and it's twenty, twenty-seven cents.
Okay, and how many go out?
Probably five hundred.
Five hundred.
I mean, it's certainly up to you. We can do that.
It would be a one-time thing.
Right, and we need to make people aware.
Initiate a new plan.
It would be the same to do it. We should do that with a letter.
Right, right.
Well, well, not only, not only that, but you also have people, the landlord, the land property owner gets the bill, if, if, if they don't pass that on to their tenants, maybe the tenants are doing the cleanup on the property, you know? Some, some people do that.
Some tenants get a copy of the bill, probably thirty-five to forty.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, I might rent from somebody, but I take responsibility for cleaning it.
I, I've never had a problem with talking to any homeowner or explaining to them.
I think we will catch most of the, of the latter.
I think that was...
That's a good idea. So, are there any further discussion on this, or...
You were involved in discussing that, but basically explaining the clear, the clear bag?
Right, no longer loose...
Yeah, we'll have to make a motion to send a letter.
At this time, we are unable to continue the loose brush pickup. Everything must fit into a bag, there, clear bag. We need to set up a motion for that.
Yeah, we'll do, for the letter, it should be a second motion request. So, are there any further discussion on the motion? If, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to, uh, do an additional mailing with the next water sewer going to sign this?
So much.
Uh, second. Uh, is there any discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Uh, I have no further new business, and anyone else have any further new business?
Can I just ask one quick question, sorry? Do we have a date for the bridge? Because I just got thinking, this is gonna interfere with the quad centennial, if we're going to be placing a date, I'd really kinda like to know. Have they got a set date yet? Because it's supposed to be next summer, correct? Or am I wrong?
If everyone, if you've already started setting, uh, that was one of his, one of his arguments was that somebody from the village wanted to park...
Somebody working for the village.
Somebody in there, which is wrong, it was a DOT employee, a contractor working for the DOT that wants to work in the village.
So, when is the anticipated completion date?
I, that, I don't know. They, they've set up the signs, they're, they've had all the permits put in.
I can't remember the exact date, but it was, it was, the, the timeframe was quite lengthy, I think, I believe it goes to next spring, the, the potential time. Uh, we should, yeah, I think we can get to that date. I, I was amazed how, I think they covered themselves, and there was more to do. Yeah, I don't think they've involved a whole, that's the issue. Correct, and we should check.
Well, one other thing, um, we'll have to set some dates for the pickup. Did you want one? A lot ago was October first, so we won't be meeting until after that, so...
We always do one just before things, Halloween, one after.
I, I think that after the leaves get in full smoke, which would probably be sometime in later October anyway.
Usually it's toward the end of October.
We do it just before, so can we call it some dates? So I can put that on, one before, one after.
Yeah, we'll have to call up some dates.
Because you'll be like a pumpkin.
But do you need to approve that, or it's okay, whatever, the impix is all right?
Yeah, I, I think it would be okay with that, in the same timeframe as we've done.
No, no, no orange pumpkin bags full of leaves. A lot of residents do that.
You can see through them.
We don't pick up pumpkins.
No, the bags, garbage bags that have pumpkin faces on them, we fill them with leaves.
Pumpkin bags.
They are clear.
But I do have about ten pumpkin bags.
They still have young children. The pumpkin bags.
How quickly we forget.
Greg, did you have something?
Yeah, I, we, uh, we've all been copied with this, uh, registration flyer with the gender for grade B water operator initial certification course, do we have?
Grade B?
Should we be pursuing this?
That's a grade B?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yes, it seems to me that I read in that, in that letter with the, the health department, that we needed a grade D.
We do have a grade D.
We already have this?
Uh, Jimmy Andres has a grade D, and Terry Leinfort has a grade D, but...
I thought Larry did too, Larry Woody has one also.
Oh, I don't think either one of them do. A grade D is license for distribution only. Uh, that's why Mr. Andres, Andres cannot do water fan, because he's not a licensed operator.
So, you would have to go to a grade C or...
He would have to go to a grade B. There's A, B, and B.
Could you check and see if anyone is interested in that? Where's that come up to?
It is, uh, the registration date is September twenty-second, it is October twentieth, the twenty-third, is a three hundred and eighty-five dollar session fee. New York Rural Water Association, and it's in Plattsburgh.
How about that?
Down at Plattsburgh, I was concerned.
A grade D license, let me just explain that real quick so you understand, so if you sense a problem. What it gives a person the right to do is work on a distribution line. Believe it or not, even though Larry and Woody or anybody else has a wa-or myself has a water license, I can't work on a water main break without being supervised, not supervised, but overseen by a person with a D license for distribution. Now, that distribution licensed person can give me verbal instruction to do it and not actually be in sight, but has to have that, that license to do so. So, just because you have a D license for running our B plant doesn't give you the right to work on a distribution line without notifying a D licensed operator.
Okay, so maybe, you know, uh, as a supervisor, I can, I can do any. Right, something like this?
I, I think it's worth while, if you have somebody...
Why don't we approve to send, uh, one person, and if no one materializes fine, if somebody is willing to do that? Because it sounds like if we had one person out, we had a water main break, then we would technically not be compliant if we only had one person.
But a D license from Town Champlain, come over and say, okay, there you go. Put it in the town. Now, if I went as a superintendent, I manage them all anyway, if I'm right there and I got a water break, I'm gonna be involved with it.
And you don't have your license for...
I do not have a D.
He's got B.
B, yeah.
All right, uh, well, I don't, you wanna...
Nope, it's funny.
To send one person to the school? How, how many days is that, Greg?
Three, twenty-first, my first, my second. Yeah, twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second, five, nineteen, and twenty-third, so it's three and a half days.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. I thought, I thought that deals...
Well, we'd have to...
Okay, so Amy, you made, you made a motion, or this?
Can we?
Can we? Is there a second?
Wait.
But it has to be, there has to be a decision soon because the registration is...
Uh, yeah, I, I think we need that, Tom, for sure.
Prior to the twenty-second, so...
I guess whatever the registration is, we ought to pay the person, uh, salary, so...
I think it's worth while.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that? Uh, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, uh, motion is carried. Did anyone else have any new business?
Motion to adjourn.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion is carried.
Any opposed?
I never had such a time to motion out as we've got, and the bags.
Don't you hate that when you can't communicate the words?
I said, we have trouble with you, you're making that motion.